We will call the committee of the whole meeting to order. Please call the roll.
Mr. Hupke.
Here.
And Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. March.
Mr. Ham.
Here.
Mr. Bowden.
Here.
Mr. Heck.
Here.
Approval of the minutes for the February 27th committee of the whole meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? I just had one small typo, second paragraph in the bottom. Since the president administrator said they had here 100 things, I think it should be heard 100 things. Any others? Not a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Jones, seconded by trustee Heck.
Mr. Jones.
Yep.
Mr. Heck.
Yes.
Mr. Bowden.
Yes.
Mr. Ham.
Yes.
And Mr. Hupke.
Yes.
Public comment. No public president at the moment, so we'll just open it up to the board for board discussion. Treasurer Marcy Hammond's here also with us tonight, so if anybody had any budget questions they'd like to ask, or if you're away to a regular meeting to, have you had anything that you wanted to talk to the board about? Appreciate you being here this evening, just in case there's any budget questions that you need to be answered.
We've got it balanced.
Are we in good shape?
Well, the county didn't help.
You can explain.
I could explain a little bit better.
Go ahead and explain, then maybe we can do the, do it again in regular meeting too, just so that's...
A little hard, without my math, but when you levy with the county... I should go get my worksheets.
Go ahead, you want to. Don't you?
Yeah, maybe I will. Let me go get those, it'll make it a little easier.
While she's doing that, how much of Railroad Street do we actually own? Like behind Susie's, you know?
I'm not sure what the distance from the tracks out is. I know it goes to, Mike, do you know?
I think we own it all, because like, I own, I had a survey done when I bought it, and they own up to just a foot or two on the other side, on the east side of my building, and then they own it from there to Railroad Street.
Okay.
And they have no, it doesn't say on there where they own it, any of it.
We lease it over here behind Susie's.
The parking lot or the street too?
Parking lot. No, street's the street.
So we own the street. But we pay, you know, a year for the lease that?
It's like a three-year thing. I'd have to go look it up.
And does that go all the way from Main Street to Propice? That would encompass the parking lot by the Legion and then the building we have there.
No, from the, from the blue building, from the blue building to Corning, and then we lease the parking lot out here.
The only reason I'm asking is, on Sunday, I actually had a resident ask me about down there, because they said, when you're driving back there, I know we want to clean it up anyways, but they said it's dumpster, 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 dumpster.
Chief and I sat down Thursday night...
It was funny, because Chief mentioned it to me, and then I had a resident.
Right. Yeah, we, we actually had a meeting with Susie from Susie's and the owner of Game On, and that was one of the topics that we talked about, was trying to get some consolidation, you know, in the, in the dumpsters back there, and...
Yeah, I drove through there, and I think if we built a structure kind of up against that electrical hut thing for the railroad, it might be a good spot for it. I mean, it won't be this year, because the budget's done, but something to think about.
I mean, that whole area needs, you know, some, some sprucing up.
Because I never noticed how many dumpsters are actually back there.
Yeah, that was, that was actually one of the things that we talked about during that meeting, so I think they were, they were going to have to, like, you know, talk about it, so that's, I think it's a good point, Ken. Back to this.
Okay. All right, so in the past, this came up in September, the county, when they do their levy, you have what they call the levy capped portion, which is general fund, and then you have the non-capped, which is typically where your bond payments and so such fall under, because those aren't subject to whatever the levy, the tax extension rate is, it's based on what you've issued in bonds. Well, our police pension fund has always been in the non-capped section. Diane, it was there when she started, that's where they put it, we've always had it there, that's fine, we've always run with it for 10 years now that way. Well, in the fall, they came to me and they said, you know, we've noticed your police pension is down in the non-capped portion.
Yeah.
Well, it's supposed to be in the capped portion. You guys are the ones that put it there, not me, so. Had a long discussion with them, they did some research, we did research, how did it get there? There is no explanation as how or why they put it there, but they did. And up until now, it's been in the non-capped portion. So, I said, fine, put it in the capped portion, we will correct this, not a problem. So, when I did my levy, I understood that part. The part they failed to explain to me, though, was, when you're doing your levy and they're calculating your extension limit or your, your limiting rate, what rate they're going to tax you at, what they're going to tax at, you start with what your previous extension was. So, our previous year, the non-capped portion, the general fund portion, was $506 million, all right? So, I said, all right, well, there it's going to be $506 million plus, last year we had $105,000, it's not $506, sorry, it's $506,000, sorry. Wish we had $506 million. $506,000, they're going to take the $105,000 and add it into the non-capped portion now. So our extension limit would be $611,000 to start. So that's how I based our levy and did our calculations. Well, then when they sent the forms the other day, I was like, this is wrong. So, we had a long discussion, and even though it is an error on the county's part, the law does not allow us to change what our extension was supposed to have been the previous years. So by law, we still have to abide by the $506,000 that we had had in our extension, and layer in and adjust everything else for the police pension. Okay? I know it's, it would be way easier if I had a white chart, but anyways. Essentially, in the end, they did not account for the $115,000 from the pension fund into our extension. So our extension then was approximately $120,000 less than we anticipated, because they did not count the pension fund towards our numbers. So, this year, instead of getting the $115 we levied for, for the pension fund, we are now getting $52,000 instead. So, that also adjusts all of the other numbers minutely, but they adjust them, they adjust some of the numbers, but the biggest hit is going to be the pension fund. Now, that is what we levied for, we can still allocate money from the general fund on our own to the pension fund, which is how the budget has been done. So we will still allocate, I was still able to allocate what we have told the pension fund they would be receiving, and I know no one wants to cut the pension fund. So we have still got the $115,000. So I was able to, we did go through, and I talked to the chief, and we cut back on some of his capital improvement plans, we cut them in half, which he was completely fine with, he said, you know, those are all wish list items. Then also in the street and trees, we cut back $10,000, Bob was fine with, because he originally only wanted the 40 for cutting trees down, and he wanted, he wanted a total of $40,000 for trees. I was giving him 40 and 10, $40,000 to cut, $10,000 to replant. But we decided we would take 30, we'd take the cutting down to $30,000, which he was fine with, and we also cut back on the streets. We had tried to budget $150,000 for street improvements, but it's down to $125,000. So, that's where we are. So the county didn't help. I mean, we were sitting very, very pretty, everyone was getting their wish list, and we were good, and then this came through, so. I know it's very confusing, and I can make copies of all these worksheets if that helps anyone.
Could you go through the numbers again? 25 from streets, how much from trees?
10.
10 from trees?
10 from trees, 25 from streets. Sidewalks, we also had at 100, and we took it down to 50. 100 was above and beyond what we've ever done, so we took it back to 50, which is normal of what we do.
There's nobody we can appeal to, to improve that?
We had the pension fund lawyers talking to them, we talked to them, and I went round and round with a couple of all the people in there. I said, this is crazy, and they said, and I mean, they were sympathetic, I said, I mean, I have to, you know, we have to report this, I go, you know, the state is all over us to fund pension funds, and here you're, you're screwing us, sorry. But they said, yeah, I, we know, I mean, but that is just the way the law is written as far as all the formulas go. And all of this is very formulaic, it's formula on top of formula. So, I don't know, I'm hoping that maybe we can, we'll continue to discuss it with them. In fact, I had to sign off on if I agree with it or not, and that was due Friday, and I didn't turn it in, and called this morning. I said, yes, Christie, I know, and you know why I didn't sign it? She says, I know, I know. She says, but we need to get it done. I said, so I'll sign, I go, can we have continued discussions? And she said, yes, we'll continue to discuss it, she goes, but I don't know, she's kind of up against the wall also, she doesn't know where to turn next either. So we'll continue to discuss it with the lawyers, and see where we can go from there, and discuss it. We talked to their attorney, the attorney general or the district attorney, that's who they went to first also, because it is an error on their part, you know, I mean, they are, yes, we're responsible for it, you know, and then she goes, but you were, you're able to take advantage of a non-capped, you know, it was in non-capped for 10 years, you could have taken, I go, yeah, we could have, but we didn't.
We didn't, yeah.
We didn't, you know, that's the point. You know, we could have gone after a lot of money then, fund hours, could have had the pension fund completely funded, but we didn't, which was the point, because I understand that. So, we're, we're amicably working together, hopefully, to resolve it, so. But I had to use the numbers that I have for the budget, so I'm hoping I have better news in the next month or two, so. And if the money comes back in, then we'll appropriate it accordingly to where we cut originally. So, that's it in a nutshell, so. If anyone wants, does anyone want any of the samples? Portion?
Want to?
Make copies?
Yeah, might as well, if you don't mind, whoever's got them.
I'll give you the math. I'll give you last year's and then this year's, so you have to compare the difference.
That would be good. While we're doing that, any other discussion from the board? Chief, do you have anything?
Not really. Oh, just to let you know, bringing that up, April 23rd, no, April 23rd till May 1st, I'll be out of town attending a training session with EMA in Maryland, so dealing with the bad things of life. So I've been invited, we'll leave Sunday of the 22nd, drive out there and a week-long training at the FEMA facility in Maryland, five-star accommodations.
Nice.
Yeah, and a dorm, bring your own sheets and pillow, because they said, but it's a, 70 different responders from Will County have been invited to attend, so they sent a whole entourage of people, so. Five days of dealing with exercises on multi-terrorism attacks or bad things happening, so, just to let you know, and I'll remind the board when I'm out of town, so that's kind of the only thing on my dance card.
23 through what, did you?
23rd through May 1st. And it's about 10 and a half hour drive, so we're taking a wagon train out there. But you have to fly into DC and then get a relay to Maryland, which is an hour and a half inland, and we're not near the ocean, so it's seafood just by carryout, no, so, it's in the, you know, the wooded area of Maryland, so it's an opportunity.
Sounds interesting.
Yeah, so.
We'll look forward to hearing that.
Yeah, if I come back, and like I said, it's all, it's an opportunity, like I said, to see what goes on with response, and whether it's terrorism or disasters, it really applies to all those factors.
Do we want to talk about Ratchy Road or the O?
I can let you, ladies and gentlemen, know that since the board meeting, we probably have had, I created, I created a report on Tuesday, so we've been almost up to 458 minutes of monitoring traffic, and with the traffic display that we see, we've probably had about 1% go up from 94 to...
I've got the numbers here that you gave me, chief, it's, since the board meeting held on March 15th, the traffic data collected March 20th, from March 14th to the 22nd indicate that vehicles traveling under 30 miles an hour at 95.74%, that's 3,773 vehicles. 31 to 40, 4.19%, that's 165 vehicles, and 41 to 53 vehicles, that's .08%.
And I, you know, my, my plan is, at least every couple of weeks, analyze the data and try to target the areas that have concern, where some people have a tendency to drive above the speed limit, but those are very difficult sometimes, because they're erratic. I mean, the speed data doesn't, weekends, the last speed data, weekends are not speeding. During certain weekday from 11, 9 o'clock till 3 or 4 o'clock, they can be speeding, but it's intermittent, I mean, there's no consistency. I know I, I met with Kevin, and Bob and I met, and, you know, we're concerned when people drive bad, you know, but we, it's hard to catch the bad drivers. So, we've, the street department's going to put the speed limit 25 mile an hour and print it on the roadways, so we can try to improve with the drivers, their knowledge and the speed before we take any other measures, and, you know, as I told Kevin in the discussion, because we are concerned, and residents have, I mean, it's frustrating for them at times, but, you know, we're going to make a diligent effort to try to see what works, look at the data every couple of weeks, so I'll come back to the board and keep you updated, and, you know, and try to make sure that there's no concern for public safety.
I know, did we order a second speed sign? I know we had talked.
We had not, because we're waiting, Marcy gets a little hard on me if I order too much for budgets not appropriated.
Okay.
So I have a stop order until I can get the budget passed.
If and when we get the second, the second sign, I've had a couple residents, you know, talk to me about Main Street, I think, you know, that...
And we also, just when Kevin and I were talking, we said we're going to paint Main Street also, to remind residents what that speed limit is, is they go down the road, it'd be across both sides. The one thing that came up in, you know, recently is, and, you know, we never thought it was an issue, because, but being there, our speed sign is actually defined as a traffic control device by regulation, and by definition, nobody can park near 30 feet, which means 30 feet in front, 30 feet in back. Well, some people were frustrated, because we had to enforce that. The problem is, sometimes they weren't parking near it, which wasn't a problem, but now you take a truck parking in that position, not only can impede the sign's ability to be seen and effective, but it also can also, it offers a traffic obstruction for people on Crown pulling out on the ratchy, because you cannot see the north-southbound traffic, because these trucks can obliterate the vision. So we have to be concerned on that, so, you know, we're, you know, we're trying to make everything effective and run the way we want it to, and like I said, we're analyzing the data, we've written a few tickets, given a lot of warnings out to people, you know, people, you know, there's, and I supplied the mayor, and I could supply, there's a whole lot of effective ways to control speed if you know you have a problem. Fortunately, when you see 95% of the people are traveling under 30 miles or under, it's not technically defined as a problem by all accounts of traffic. We don't have a high accident rate, if any, out there, we have yet to have one, but that's, you know, the data, the supplies of traffic data, speed data, is what you get in the countermeasures of whether you want to stop signs, speed bumps, all these, but all of them that we talk about have a degree of effectiveness. You know, people will stop, and then they'll speed up after you get past a stop sign, speed bumps, all that, so there's a lot, engineers have studied this over the years, and I went to a rereading things on community policing, and how do you affect speed in residential areas, and there's a lot of guidelines, but there is no all-purpose effective solution. So like I said, Bob and Kevin and I have spoken, and we said we'd try to paint the roads, and we'll keep monitoring the speeds, and some enforcement presence, and then we'll sit down and evaluate how that's going, and so, that's about where we're at with that, sir.
Good, thank you. Any questions for you, chief?
Last, if you have an open minute?
Yeah, go ahead, we got...
You got minutes?
You go ahead.
We are recently, gosh, we've been meeting for the last, probably since the beginning of school year. Fire, police, schools, talking about responsiveness, and that, please, give me your patience if I get repetitive, because a lot of things go on in this brain, I don't know how often I've talked about it. But we do, we're, a lot of things you see in the paper about response to schools, and what happens if, you know, school violence takes place, and we're, we've been discussing it with our schools, we've done some tabletop drills, we're constantly meeting twice a month on better response to bad things that go on in our schools, and this takes a lot of coordination of effort, because you're not, just not us responding to our schools, it's additional resources coming from all areas. So the, then, one of the ideas is we have to get first aid to any victims immediately, because, you know, that's the key to saving lives, is to get the responders in there. So, we are diligently looking at new response to schools, and factories, and big businesses, and we are way ahead of some agencies are looking at this, because it's a whole different concept of law enforcement, fire, working together and getting into the arena when it's not all clear, or it's just clear enough to get us in there and just try to tend to the injured, and that's a priority. Number one, stop the bad guy, number two is tend to the injured, because seconds are lives in the world of saving people during critical injuries, so.
Do we have any problems with our radios in the school? I know at, you know, one of the EastCom meetings recently, a couple of the different entities were talking about when they get into the schools, you know, they have problems.
We, we tested that, and we did not, in fact, when we spoke to the other family members of the EastCom Communication Group, the only town, the only town that really had problems with the radios was Crete, the way the Crete facilities laid out, and they were having some dead zones, but they're dealing with that, but we do not in our schools. So we've, we've tested it after that discussion, and we just don't need any amplifier devices, because our radios work well. So it's a work in progress, I mean, we have timetables and meetings, and, you know, we sent the, we sent some of our staff to, a new concept on react, response to, not only schools, it's response to major incidents of violence, and so, it's called ALICE training, so we got people responding, so, because we're getting positive in the future of what we need to plan for, unlike, we plan for emergency, we have this emergency action plan region-wide, but this is an important task, and it takes a lot of time to put this together, because we're working on school pace, we're working on our pace, we're going to be getting all the school, police and fire agencies all trained online in the ALICE concept. So the school is, you know, it's going to cost us $10 a year per member to go through the training online and keep certification, and every year you recertify, just a good reminder of the playbook that needs to understand is what everybody's doing, so when you're there, you're not lost, and what you're, you have to practice, and the big key, and eventually will be a big major drill where this can be physically practiced, where you have to respond, get in, tend to the injured, which in the fire world is challenging, because, you know, when you start talking mass injuries, it's hard to care for six to 12 injured at one time, it's, you know, they, resources are thin, and, you know, so putting together the training on their side along with how police respond. I recently attended a session and training with the Illinois Tactical Officer Association and MABUS group that are talking about this, so it's a new twist on better response, and I know you may have heard bits and pieces of it, it's, our staff behind the scenes is involved with it, and it's a, it's a good step that I see with our police and fire in schools addressing this issue, and later on, as it gets developed, the public will be more and more aware of it.
Good. Anything else?
Is ALICE spelt spelled Alice?
Yeah, A-L-I-C-E, and later I'll give you the acronym for it, I just don't have all the alphabets, what all means, memorized yet, Donna.
Thank you, chief.
All right, thanks.
One of the things I wanted to bring up is, last year we had a community cleanup day, and I'd like to see us do that again this year, so I was thinking, last year we did it, it was either the end of April or the beginning of May.
Yeah, I think we're better off in May a little bit.
I was just going to say, it poured that day, it was just miserable. I was thinking maybe towards the end of May.
Practice school.
If anybody has a thought on that?
Sounds great.
We did it on a Saturday, you know, from like 9:00 to noon, and then kind of targeted, we have some certain areas, kind of did a little drive around town, and, you know, developed a plan, a lot with public works. I was looking, May the 27th?
Are we getting too close to graduation and parties and stuff, David?
Yeah, it could be.
27th is Memorial Day weekend?
Oh, is it? Yeah, we don't want to do that.
That's bad. 20th, or...
When's graduation?
The high school is the 27th, is the Friday of Memorial Day weekend, so what is that, the 26th or 27th?
26th.
And the junior high is the Thursday before.
May 20th?
How about the 20th?
Yeah.
When it gets us the week before? Gives us time to get it out, like?
Yeah, that's going to be a big thing, getting the word out.
Yeah.
But I think the only thing, only thing that I actually think with May is, on Saturdays, you're going to lose a lot of people for baseball and softball, but, because that starts on, but I don't think that's that big of a deal.
Well, we'll try it, we'll try it this year on that date and see how it goes, and hopefully get a, we had a decent response last year, I was, I was happy.
We should have made a list of all the people that were here.
Yeah, I've got a, kind of a mental, a little bit of a mental list of some of the people that were here, but I think last year, I think we can get it out a little bit better this year, too. I think we're kind of a little bit close on the announcement to the time we did it last year.
We should have coffee and donuts, too, and kind of...
Yeah, we'll do that. I'll take care of that.
Give me one minute, okay?
You may want to hit the schools.
Yeah, I will.
Like National Honor Society, Student Council.
Yeah, that's a good idea, that's a good idea. Boy Scouts.
Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts.
Because that's where we get a lot of our help, you know, during the festivals downtown or through those organizations, and then, you know, I give them letters for community service, because all of these kids need community service for their college applications and so forth, so if they come down to work four hours at an event... so forth, so if they come down and work four hours at an event, you know, I give them a letter for four hours of community service.
Sure. What's your time? Do you think it's nine to four?
Nine to twelve, I think is good. That was May twentieth? Yes, Saturday. And we can actually put that on our agenda for the next board meeting, too, so it's a formal thing, but, since we had time, we can talk about it. Now, Peter had mentioned wanting to plant a tree in Arbor Day also, I don't know when Arbor Day is.
Uh, I thought it was April...
I think it's May first.
Is it May first weekend, is that a May Day thing? No, I thought they did, it was...
I think it's a Friday, I think it's April twenty-eighth.
Yeah.
I'll talk with him when he gets back and, that coordinated.
Last Friday in April.
What day is it?
April twenty-eighth. Twenty-ninth? Oh, twenty-eighth, sorry, you're right.
I was noticing, Sunday, we still have the Christmas tree lights up on the tree downtown.
Oh, okay, we'll have to ask the guys, they took them down last year.
Did they?
Yeah.
That's a chair squeaking.
Chair squeaking.
It's you.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make mention of that to them, I didn't notice that.
Does brush start next week?
Yes.
I believe so, yes.
Yes, it does.
Unless it snows.
Unless it snows.
What is that scheduled?
First Monday in April. First and third Monday will be north.
North.
Second and fourth Monday will be south, Corning. Is Corning north, is Corning the south side or the north side? I don't remember now.
All of Corning and all streets north.
North.
The second and fourth are all streets south of Corning.
I do see a little bit of brush around. Okay, well, if there is no further discussion for the committee of the whole, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Motion by trustee Hupkey, second by trustee Han.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Han?
Yes.
Mr. Valdman?
Yes.
Mr. Kat?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
We will reconvene at seven o'clock for the regular village board meeting.